Hello and a very warm welcome to this Preston election debate for 2023. Brought to you by the local democracy reporting service. It's your chance to see what the main parties standing for Preston city council are promising you in return for your vote this year. So if you'd like to cut through the claims, bypass the soundbites and dig a little deeper into the detail before deciding where to place your very valuable cross later this week. Then stay with us and we should be able to help you out. Now, in order to be eligible to take part in this debate, a party had to be standing in at least a third of the seats up for grabs in Preston this year. And under that role, it just so happens to be the three parties currently represented on the authority that made the cut. However, you can find manifestos from the Green Party and also the Alliance for Democracy and Freedom by following links that you will find somewhere in the vicinity of this video, wherever you may be watching it. But for the main event, I'm delighted to be joined by the current Labour leader of Preston City Council, Matthew Brown. Sue Witten, leader of the Conservative Opposition Group and John Potter, leader of the Liberal Democrats. You're all very welcome. Thanks very much indeed for joining me. We thought a good place to start would be by giving you each 60 seconds uninterrupted to make your pitch to the people of Preston. And we drew to see who would get the honour of going first. And out of the proverbial and entirely non-existent hat came the name Sue Witten. So Sue, your 60 seconds, start now. Away you go.
Thank you. We work hard in our local community to help our residents. We listen and we care. Although the Covid pandemic seems to be behind us now, we are still facing a cost of living crisis which is hitting people hard. And even though it is out of our local control, we will do all we can to help residents get the help and support they need. Our recent resident survey has swarmed our priorities for Preston. We will tackle antisocial behaviour and make our city safe for all, in particular women and young girls. We will support and enhance all our parks and green spaces for the benefit of everyone. Maximize opportunities for tree planting and greening our buildings and ensure we have a robust local plan that puts climate change and biodiversity at its heart. We will develop a transport strategy that connects Preston city to the rural areas to support the development of jobs and businesses in our rural economy. We'll make sure that Preston is open for business and health businesses who want to move here. So think local please and vote Conservative on the 4th of May. Thank you.
Just in under the bar. Thanks very much indeed, Sue. John, you're up next. Whenever you're ready, away you go.
On May 4th, it's your chance to have your voice heard, whether it's to the local council, the county cabinet or the government. But May 4th is also an opportunity to elect brilliant, hardworking liberal Democrat community champions from the city centre to our rural villages. Throughout the year, the Lib Dems have knocked on thousands of doors. While the other parties tell you what they want, the Lib Dems listen to what you need. And that's why we've got the big calls right on schools, roads, the environment, guild funding and council assets. We've worked constructively cross-part on big issues such as the Harris, the markets, the youth zone and the tranbridge. But we also challenge the ruling parties when we think they're making bad decisions or wasting your money. Our candidates are teachers, NHS workers, engineers, barristers and business owners. We are the volunteers that help out in our schools, our parks and our community centres. Real honest people who want to make Preston a better place to live, study and work. A better future and a fairer deal for Preston is possible and every vote for Liberal Democrats will help us fight for it.
John, thanks very much indeed. And finally to you, Matthew, your 60 second pitch, whenever you're ready.
Hi everyone. Really important elections taking place on May the 4th and in the Labour Party, we believe it's about choices. We feel we're the only party to offer real change, an alternative to 13 years of Tory and Lib Dem austerity policies that people are frankly sick and tired of. In this election, we have 17 Labour candidates who are all hungry to make Preston a better and fairer place. As a Labour-led council, we've knocked shirt from challenging interests that hold our city back when they're moving on from corporate-led regeneration of our city centre. Getting developers to develop affordable housing and use local suppliers and labour. Joining the campaign for a real living wage and taking back Preston Guild Hall. We'll continue with our public regeneration of our city centre. We'll create hundreds of new jobs. We'll deliver major investment in Preston's parks, tackle the climate emergency and invest heavily in sports and youth facilities. We'll deepen our economic policies to benefit everyone.
Matthew, I'm going to have to stop you there. Sorry, I've got to be ruthless. I'm sure you'll get a chance to flesh out all your points over the next hour or so. And as we sit here doing this debate for the third year in a row now, it almost feels like the city's in a bit of a holding pattern really, doesn't it? Waiting for various big projects to come to fruition over the course of the next 18 months. The Harris museum, of course, will be reopening and obviously there's also Anim8, the big cinema and leisure complex being built on the old site of the indoor market there. We know that it's going to cost £45 million. We know that that's gone up by around 10% over the past year because of inflationary pressures. And we also know that £28 million of it is coming from borrowing. So the city really has gone all in on this, hasn't it? It's got to work. Matthew, starting with you, what makes you so confident that it will?
Well, obviously we look quite forensically on things around borrowing. We have section 151 offices which really go through all the books and make sure that the council finances will be sustainable. And obviously the project will be manageable. I think there's quite an important point here that we need to be quite resilient as a community in Preston. You know, we've moved on, as I said in my earlier comments, from solely depending on corporate developers and actually regenerating the city collectively in our ownership. So we can use local people and use local suppliers. So we're confident it's going to work. We're confident that we'll get all the tenants in it within the next few months. And we think it's a fantastic asset and you put that together with the youth zone, with the moundless house, with regeneration of the Harris, as you mentioned before, with the return of Preston Guild Hall. And obviously some significant development in social and affordable housing around Stony Gate. We really believe that we're actually really regenerating our city from the grassroots upwards.
Sue, you back Anim8, don't you? Obviously you've never made any secrets of that fact. But are you entirely comfortable with the way it's being funded and the borrowing commitment rather than it will entail?
I mean, the one thing that I think we all agree here is that it's really important that we regenerate the city centre. Because we do need to have that vibrant economy in the city centre. Anim8, yes, but I've always had reservations about a cinema, but we're going to see what happens with that. But equally.
What in particular, Sue? What are your reservations about a cinema?
About people actually using the cinema. I think the independent shops and the shopping area absolutely needs to be at the fore. But I've always had reservations about the cinema because people don't tend to go to the cinema as much as they used to. Covid's changed things as well. And it's a lot of money that the city is borrowing for this scheme. The good thing is that our government have put money into the city centre. So they're convinced that it's worth fighting for to improve it. But there has been a couple of changes, hasn't there really, Matthew? Because we weren't expecting the Guild Hall to be back in our ownership and that adds another ball to juggle in the air. And there seems to be a lot of projects going on and we really need to finish one of them before we can move on to the next one. So that's my reservations. And I know I've said it in council before about the amount of balls that they're juggling in the air and the amount of money that we're borrowing. Let's get on and get Anim8 finished and then get everything else in a row, rather than trying to do all things at all times.
Well, we'll come to the Guild Hall ball, as I'm sure you would have imagined in just a second. But first of all, John, are you comfortable with Anim8 being the flagship project that Preston has put so much store by?
There was no choice. I mean, this is why we got cross-party agreement on it. I mean, there was a risk and a substantial amount of debt and risk the council is taking on to be able to do this. But the bigger risk was to do nothing. And to let our towns and our city centre go further downwards was just not something any one of us could accept. And the private sector wasn't going to do it on its own, you know? And this is actually an example of the private and public sector working together to hopefully regenerate a part of the city. And it's a bit, and a little bit on Sue's point, it's a bit like starting the domino effect of actually getting regeneration. We knew we had to get it started as a local authority and that's what, again, all three of us voted for. There was no dissension across any of the parties. But if we don't start this area, then all the others there in the city won't follow. So it was a really important, I think it's the old Keynesian phase of priming the pump, you know, that sort of thing. That was the purpose of it. That's why we're all agreed on it. Because if we didn't, the town and the city centre would be in real trouble.
Matthew, you've made great play of this being, you know, a distinctive Preston development done Preston's way. And behind the scenes, maybe it will be, as you said yourself, using local labour and local supply chains where possible. But to the people that you hope to actually attract to use it, this won't scream Preston, will it? It could be anywhere. It's almost clone town stuff, isn't it?
I think the fact that we're actually developing the asset in our ownership means that we can have a big say over who the people are within it. Obviously for it to be sustainable and get the return that's needed, because we obviously need to make sure that is a reality. We do need some national restaurants. It's not like it's retail. These are restaurant businesses. So it's really, you know, behind the kind of regeneration of our city centre around culture and entertainment and leisure in many ways. There will be a number of independent businesses in the street food hub. There's a, the cinema is an independent operator. Additionally, there's going to be a, I think it's called a competitive social unit, which again, we hope will be an independent provider. And crucially, the street view hub will be very much linked to our markets. So, you know, it is, I think, quite distinctive in, you know, in line with what we've got to deal with in terms of the economic values nationally that we have. And obviously the support that we're getting from the government, which I still think is pretty limited. You know, we don't have as much money as we'd like. So in terms of that, I think it's pretty good. But crucially, Paul, obviously there will be 340 jobs, 200 during the construction and development phase and 140. Then there's a knock-on effect as well. If you put in the youth zone, the jobs through the Harris, a moundless house and obviously hopefully getting the Guild Hall back into use. You know, it could potentially head towards 1,000 jobs. And a really important point that if we were still holding the hands of corporate developers like we were from the late 90s to 2011. You know, potentially nothing would have happened because that was a wrong approach. We're taking control of our own city. We're doing it publicly and we're making sure that as many people as possible benefit. Is it as perfect as I'd like? No, it's not. But it's the best we could do in the current circumstances.
Well, the Guild Hall, Sue mentioned that, just coming back to you for a second on that. Sue, are you saying that the reopening of the Guild Hall should be delayed while Anim8 is completed? Because there's so much interest in the reopening of the Guild Hall. It's such a popular venue and an iconic one for the city. Would you really want to say to residents that actually you think it should be closed for another two years or so?
No, I'm not saying that. But it'd be interesting to see. I mean, the Guild Hall was mothballed originally. And in 2012, it cost a million to have it mothballed per year. So it needs a lot of work on it. And it'd be interesting to know how that work is going to be carried out. What we'd all love to see is a pantomime at the Guild Hall at Christmas this year. I don't want the other two to go, oh no, we wouldn't. Oh yes, we do. But we would really like to see that opening and that might be able to be done quicker if we've got the money available to just do those things to get it back up to up and running. You know, there's been quite a lot, there's quite a problem with like the furniture and everything else in the Guild Hall. It all needs refurbishing and it needs things done to it because it can't, it can't be just kept as it is currently. And obviously it's been out of use for a couple of years. So yeah, I want to see the Guild Hall up and running, but we can't do everything. So something has to give at this moment in time. So Anim8 starting, the youth zone is in the pipeline and it is an important thing for the city. But I'd like to see, you know, youth zone satellites in other areas of Preston, not just in the city centre. But that is another project that is up and running. A moundless house, you know, the Harris will get finished, but we do need the Guild Hall. I do recognise everybody feels the same, that it is so important to Preston.
Well, John, as councillors, you're all going to get the final say on whatever model is put in place in order to run the Guild Hall. What do you think needs to be put in place in order to ensure that you don't end up back in the position that you did as a council back in 2019?
I think obviously we just need to find the right people to run it. So it's not going to be publicly run. We're not going to, the council doesn't have the experience or the ability to run a venue and get it to be a profitable level. Because as Sue said, before it was moved on, it was running at quite a considerable loss. But actually, you know, behind the scenes, which we can't talk about publicly yet, we are in negotiation with top level kind of companies that do this for a living. And, you know, the Guild Hall's only maybe got 30, 40 years left in it, you know, before the building will be at a point where it can't continue. So let's get a good operator involved, give it a brilliant final hurrah and actually get, because culture, we'll talk about city centres and not just retail. Actually, city centre will be places where people do stuff, not just where people buy things. And actually having a cultural centre in the Guild Hall was really important to that.
Matthew, you obviously agree that it's going to be a vital asset to the city once again when it is up and running. Wouldn't you, with your Preston model hat on, actually quite like to see it kept under council control or returned to council control?
What we are going to do, Paul, is look at all options. We're not really anything in anything out. My own view is that we've got to explore that, but the reality is, is it was losing nearly a million pounds before. But we're going to have a number of experts looking at all the options and obviously making sure we can make sure the model, whatever that's going to be, is in line with our values. I think what we're definitely not going to do is do what we did previously and hand a 1,000-year lease to an individual businessman. Which is very difficult to have any kind of control going forward on how it's run going forward. But we do need to obviously re-engage with artists, re-engage with business community, re-engage with the voluntary set, to re-engage with obviously promoters and all the rest of it. But we've got to look at what Preston is in 2023, because it's four years ago when obviously the legal action started, which we didn't instigate by the way. It was obviously the former owner's family that instigated it.
This was legal action against the council for anybody who's not followed it too closely.
Indeed, yes. So obviously it's not something that we started and that obviously put the asset out of use in the way that we imagined it would be in use for nearly four years. But I think we need to look at where we are. Something creative, distinctive and cutting edge that will appeal to people. If it can be publicly run, either in part or in whole, I think that's something we will seriously look at. But obviously the reality is, is that it was offloaded in 2014, I think, just because of the austerity cuts. We would have kept it in-house, but we faced a cut in our budget from, I think, 30 or million to 20 or million. So certain things had to go, even though we didn't want them to go. So let's see where we go. But crucially, we want to get it back in use as soon as possible. And obviously, John, Sue and myself as leaders will be looking at getting something to full council potentially in June or July. And then we can begin to make a decision about how we do that. But it can't be rushed, but it needs to be done relatively quickly because it's been out of circulation for too long.
Have you, just briefly, have you got a timeframe in mind? Would you share Sue's hope stroke optimism that there could be a pantomime there this year?
We'll do our best. I'm not sure if we can all start and it maybe that might be the only way of actually ensure it can take place. But obviously we want to impose that on the Preston public. Obviously we'll do our best, but we can't promise anything. It's not going to be easy, but obviously our administration is really keen to make things happen. And I think that's the key thing. We're making things happen now and doing it in our own way and making sure as many people benefit in Preston.
That legal wrangle that you referred to came to a head last month with a settlement between the council and the parties that were bringing the legal action. That's why you're now in a position to move ahead with ultimately reopening the venue. The terms of that settlement have been kept confidential. John, are you comfortable with that? Don't you think that whatever the rights and wrongs of how we got here, the people of Preston deserve to know how much this affair has actually cost them?
I'm sure the people of Preston would love to know, but obviously the legal standings on the ruling restrict us from saying anything. And actually, one of the key things, and there are things about what happened in the process I was not happy about. And I've drawn Matthew and Sue exactly the same, but the outcome is we've got it back in public hands. And whatever, we needed to draw a line under the last few years and that now has been done. And I think all of us can be thankful that the Guild Hall and whatever happens next to it is out of the previous owner's hands.
Sue, do you share that sentiment that basically at any cost, this just had to be done?
Yeah, it's been a long and uncomfortable road, is what I would say on this one. But, and likewise, we can't say anything about it. But it is good news that we've got the Guild Hall back in some ways because we need to move on. A quick point though, Paul, about previously when it got offloaded. Okay, it got offloaded, but that was the decision that was made at the time, which was before even I was on the council. But I'd like to see the Guild Hall look at being a registered charity or something along those lines, as somebody else to take it forward. That's what I would like to see.
Matthew, in whose interest is it that these details are being kept confidential? I know you're restricted in exactly what you can say, but for the people on Preston who do wonder how much this has cost them as council taxpayers, what can you say to them? What comfort can you offer them?
Well, obviously I would like to be as transparent as I can be, but it's more complex than people think, legal negotiations and settlements. And obviously, we're not not saying anything for the sake of it, just to move the situation on. That is part of the settlement that people want to, in many ways, move on and not reveal details. So, you know, so that's why we're not saying anything. But I think that we need to concentrate on the fact that we have got the asset back and we can move on now. Because it's been lots of complaints on social media and understand people's frustrations. As I said, this action wasn't instigated by the authority. It was put into administration unexpectedly in 2019. We took ownership of it because, as I said, we were prepared to stand up and do the best thing for Preston. And then we've had this legal wrangle go on. So I just think we need to concentrate on the fact that it's over and we'll bring it back as soon as we can.
And I want to, can I just point out, Paul, it doesn't, there were loads of things that me, Matthew and Sue would love to make public. Because actually, some things that are said, we could love to actually throw back and say, actually, this is the truth of what happened.
You're all the one on this, aren't you? You're all the one. There's no cross-party.
Because we've all seen what had to happen. We all had the briefings from the lawyers, et cetera. And the things that we know behind the scenes, which would really, really put a new light on this, but we can't. And we have to agree by that because it's for the good of the city at Preston and we had legal obligations of that. We just couldn't get round.
Just moving on, another big issue in the city at the moment is the concept of city centre living, which is a policy that the council's been pursuing for the past few years. And it looks to be coming to fruition now, certainly with the whole raft of planning permissions for various sized bomb blocks, some of them verging on the gargantuan. And it will change the look of Preston, won't it, quite significantly, the city centre living strategy? I know from observing planning committee meetings, when some of these schemes have been approved, there's been concern from some members that maybe Preston has reached saturation point in terms of the number of these developments that it can sustain. Is there not a risk that some of these could be built and not sold? And Preston will be left with even just a handful of few white elephants, which would be disastrous for the city's image, wouldn't it? Stay with you, John, on this one.
I have to be a little bit careful because I'm actually on planning committee. So I don't want to prejudice myself for future decisions, but I mean, every application is looked for in its merits, you know? And that's the way it has to be with planning. But we can't escape the fact, we do need to have more people living in the city centre. It's important for the economy. It's important for the city to grow. It's important for council tax kind of contributions, all the rest of those that we want to do. Because all the other things we want to do is depending on Preston growing and being a vibrant city. And part of that is city living. So, I mean, a lot of these things, well, all of them, are, you know, done by different developers and stuff. So the risk to the council in terms of finances is minimal. Whether things become white elephants, you know, you're asking, that's a massive if and we can't really say either way at this point.
Sue, as a former planning committee member, you may be able to say a little more on the subject. And also I'm interested in your views on the fact that a number of these developers that have had permissions granted have been able to successfully argue that they can't afford, ironically, to put affordable homes within them, because the developments would be unviable, as they have argued and as has been accepted by the city council in the process of granting permission. Are you comfortable with the fact that some of these developments will necessarily be out of the reach of existing Preston residents?
Absolutely. To be honest with you, Paul, I mean, as you know, I was on planning before, but I'm not now. And we've seen a number of granted permissions for city centre living, as you've said. I'm not against city centre living. I think you really need a balance and a mix of all different things in the city centre. I mean, and having master plans like a Stony Gate, one in the station quarter, a great way forward to sort of make sure we get the right things in the right place. But what we've got with Preston, we have got a number of developers coming forward because it was student accommodation first of all. And then that all bombed because a lot of the students didn't come to Preston and it dropped off at Covid. So a lot of developers who are throwing everything into student accommodation now decided, oh no, we'll go into actual city centre living. And you're right, a lot of it isn't viable and that's been raised at planning committee and again and again. But viability isn't a reason to turn down a planning application. If a developer comes forward and says they can do it, I hope they do do it, but we know a number of times it doesn't happen. But what my concern is not just about the city centre living, looking at planning as a whole in the centre of Preston. We have very old office stock. And that's why it's important we get some new office buildings built to attract people to come and work in Preston. We want people to work and live in Preston. So that would be my sort of pitch on trying to get more of those good quality office accommodation, then that can be happening in Preston as well.
Matthew, just coming to you, it really has been foot to the floor with city centre living over the past couple of years, hasn't it? Are you comfortable with the speed at which the city is heading down that road?
In some ways, no. I do think we need to, the uncomfortability of it is probably around the fact that has been alluded to is that the way that we do operate and the planning policy frameworks that we do operate within, developers could actually get out of providing affordable housing. It's really unfair. It's a Conservative government policy. It attacks local democracy and our opportunity to make choices. So yes, it's very frustrating that we have, say, often £200, £300 developments and not one single affordable house within it. Now, what I do know is we do have offices that do negotiate very hard with all developers in these developments to ensure we do get affordable housing. We've got a specialist that looks at the claims that there's viability, which is often challenged. But I just feel that we're up against so much with the restrictions we're placed upon. And that is why we're working with registered providers to make sure that in that area, we're going to get lots of new affordable and social housing. So that's been something we've engaged with extremely strongly, including with Homes England. And also we will move forward with plans to start developing council housing again. Now, obviously it might be a small number, around 20 in the next two years, but we obviously want that to scale up. Potentially look at how we can work with South River and Chorley on that through re-establishing a housing revenue account. But also if there's a change of government as well, big opportunities there. Because we don't have a mixed economy in housing in Preston. We have privately owned houses, we have privately rented houses and we come on to that later because that in itself is causing a few problems. And housing association properties, we don't have council housing. Councils did 30 or 40 years ago. They were the main provider of housing in our communities. And obviously there is a big change with Mrs Satch and beyond. And I think we've got to, in many ways, get back to councils actually providing decent quality homes for people in a modern setting. So obviously we're determined to do that as well. But to answer your question, obviously I want people to come in. I think people living in the city is brilliant, the concept of a 15-minute city, you know, enjoy living in the city, socialise, work, raise a family and the rest of it. But, you know, it can't just be out of reach of people in our communities. We've got to think of the people in less well-off areas who might want to move into the city centre. And if we're just bringing people in from outside and not benefiting indigenous people often, who, often for minority communities, who need the opportunities to actually move into the city centre and potentially in a slightly better property, it's a bit discriminatory in many ways.
Well, just while we're on housing, coming back to you, Sue, one of the amendments that you attempted to make to the budget this year was to remove funding that Labour wanted to allocate for a housing study into the private rented sector, wasn't it? That came in for a bit of criticism at the time during the debate. Can you defend not investing in something like that when it could make such a difference to people's lives day to day in the city, so many of whom are in the private rented sector?
We just thought that another study of, to know, to put money towards that was not the right thing to do at this time. And we didn't have anything against that, but when there was other things to spend money on, we didn't feel that that was an important issue. I totally understand about, you know, people renting and trying to get the quality of homes up to the right standard for people is really difficult. But there are other things being done nationally that will come in to try. And we've all seen that that terrible situation of that child who died in Rochdale, I think it was, due to the mould issues. Those are absolutely terrible. And it's only, if you look back a few years, we had similar issues with student accommodation. And it was only by working in partnership with UCLAN and others that that student accommodation, they began to build quality accommodation for students. And I would have never imagined students wanting old sweets and all the rest of it. I remember when I was a student, there was none of that then, but which is quite a while ago. All this fancy accommodation, which is good, which is really good. But equally, people who deserve a decent home, don't they? And I'm not on about, you know, the study's fine, but it's trying to get into there and to get in touch with those private landlords and get that accommodation up to standard. And I just think there are other ways to do it without Preston always having to do everything on these things. There are other people that we can get involved and other housing associations that we can help engage as well to discuss this stuff. Thank you.
Well, the local plan for central Lancashire, the first one in which Preston, Chorley and South River have created this joint plan and document that will basically dictate development across central Lancashire over the next 15 years. That's now, it's well underway as a process, long been underway as a process. And that finally looks like it's going to come to a conclusion over the course of the next year or so. John, are you confident that that will enable Preston to avoid some of the traps that it's fallen into previously in terms of government targets for housing numbers and not being able to meet them? And so some developments being given the go-ahead in areas of the city where the council itself ordinarily by its own policies wouldn't have wanted to give those the green light?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the big problem we've had is actually the government changes its mind on planning policy every six months. So councils struggle to keep up with it. So at one point, Preston had a target of over 1,000 houses a year to have to do. It's now down at around 200 and we're building somewhere in around, I think, 800 or something. It's now down at around two hundred and we're building somewhere in around, I think, eight hundred or something a year. So, but you're right, previously, you know, things like Ingle Golf Course probably never would have been passed. But actually, because we didn't have a five year supply, and that's obviously very technical. But this current local plan is coming to an end. We're nearly done it. Preston's done its bit. You know, North West Preston is get, is gonna get its new train stations, new roads, the houses that go with it. But actually what we want for the next local plan is making sure we fix some of the stakes in this one, you know, particularly around, you know, biodiversity, how insulated our homes are, the, the interconnectivity between new homes and, and community hubs. So it's not just, we're not just some toy town that's full of houses. We're actually building communities that last into the future and protect our wildlife and other things that are really important to lots of people in this city.
Matthew, just turning to you on that one and the issue of the local plan, John referred to, to the five year supply, which as he said, is a bit technical. Basically, that means if, if a council has not set aside five years' worth of land to meet its, its housing targets, it can be, it can be forced basically to approve developments that it, it wouldn't otherwise have done so. Preston ended up in that situation for a period in the late twenty teens and there was a lot of developments in, in the rural north of the city. Whatever the issues about government policy that led you to that point, couldn't Preston, as a city council, have worked better within the framework that it had to avoid ending up in that position? And do, do you owe an apology to the people in, in the rural north for the developments that they've now got?
Well, it was obviously a very unexpected situation there. I mean, we did work, you've got to remember, in terms of the local plan, we do work collaboratively with Chorley and South River as well as Preston to work on numbers, to agree development quotas across all three authorities. Um, we did our best and we do do our best to make sure that we don't overdeveloping areas that we don't want areas to be overdeveloped in. But as you've stated earlier, there was too much government interference in that situation. We weren't allowed to do what we wanted to do in collaboration with our partners. So, yes, we expected that it would have been within the rules that obviously, uh, there was obviously a change back then. But we did our, we did our best for, for all our communities in Preston. We continue to do so. And I just think there's too much centralisation. You know, we've got to work within a very centralised framework and that is our fault. So we're going to push it to the limits. But we did our best for everyone, including in the rural communities back then.
Can I just come in, Paul, so I can just say, one thing that's key point is, is actually a, a lot of local councils, and that's of whatever political colour, are completely kiboshed because we're saying, okay, you need these targets, but we don't build the vast majority of those houses. So we will pass, uh, planning applications. House builders then don't build on it, sit on the land and then, and then councils then get criticised saying, why aren't you building these houses? When actually it's completely out of control. So the councils tend to get clobbered from both sides of this debate. And developers have way too much power compared to councils in order to, to dictate this stuff. Like, for example, one of the things that most people have no ideas, there's no actually law to tell developers when they should finish. They have to start within five years, but they basically put a gatepost in and that means they're covered for the rest of time. Uh, and so, and so these things are a massive, like substantial problems with planning law that we have no say in whatsoever as a local authority, which then caused that problem before. And now, just so we know, we have a fourteen year housing supply at the moment. So we're doing, we're doing okay.
Sue, the Conservative government nationally doesn't make it easy for councillors, does it? Even just this month, Michael Gove suggested that he's going to scrap housing targets, which could throw the local plan process up into the air. This is something that Preston, Chorley and South River have worked on, you know, for the past four years. All that work could be for naught if, if the, the foundations of, of government policy change.
Well, I've, I've always said that, I don't always agree with what our government does, the Conservative government does. And, and the other two gentlemen know that. Uh, and when it comes to planning, believe you me, I have not agreed with a lot of things that have gone on for a long time with the government. All I do is my very best to lobby and every single white paper and consultation that comes out on planning, I am there responding to that for the residents of, of Preston and in particular the rural areas. Because we've been dealt a flipping tough deal is all I can say with regards to planning. But I do want to say something, and I know you, you mentioned the new plan coming in, which is really important, uh, that we get a new robust plan in. Uh, but what I have got concerns about is under that plan, we are increasing the density of homes. It is going up again and, and I don't think it's the right thing to do. It's not about ramming as many properties as you can into an area. It's about having that balance of different types of houses and homes for everybody, but having those green spaces. And it, and it breaks my heart when I see, you know, we're getting a linear park and it runs under pylons. Because that's the bit where they can't build homes, isn't it? Or the schools, you know, bits of land that are reserved are quite near to pylons. And you think, really? Is this what we want? So I do, I do hope that the new plan does address a lot of these issues. I'm really concerned about density in the new plan. And the other point I want to make is that, yes, we did have figures for building, building, um, targets for homes. Um, in relation with Chorley and South River, we come to an agreement, but we always take our biggest share at Preston. And I don't think it's always right. We get the bigger target because of the growth. And, and I've also said this, uh, at number planning meetings, so the, the, we were all well aware that I think it's too much at times that we take all the pain. Uh, and especially in North West Preston, the, the, the original idea was fantastic idea. Everybody signed up to it. Two primary schools, a secondary school, a doctors, a dentist. Everything was going to be there. It was going to be fantastic. But actually making people do that is very difficult at times.
Well, hav- having shared one of these debates for Chorley, I think they may dispute that they, they didn't take their first share. Certainly in, in the early twenty teens, when, when Bookshaw Village was being developed, that would be, um, that, that was certainly their feeling, although Preston is going to take the lion's share in the early years of this next local plan. In recognition of the fact that, that Chorley had taken so much originally, um, just to wrap.
So a quick point, Paul, on that, but South River uh, don't take their share and neither do they take their share of travellers. They don't, they won't even have a travellers' policy. Uh, so it's, it's, I find the difficult relationship between the, between Chorley and South River for dealing with the plan, I have to say.
Well, the, the, no one here from South River to, to defend that position, but Matthew, if you've got concerns about doing this over a, a central Lancashire wide footprint, would you actually rather retain a, a Preston city, a council local plan?
I think it needs to be done across, uh, the functioning economic area, which obviously does involve, uh, South River, Chorley and ourselves. So I think that needs to continue. Obviously, each area is going to have their own priorities, their own values, their own aspirations. I think what we have to do though is look at principles. And I think we just, uh, are restricted by a planning policy which favours developers. Many of the people who donate to the Conservative Party are within the developments industry. It seems that obviously things are working for them and not for communities. And I think that is holding us back. But the, the local plan's an opportunity to ensure the development goes where we want it to, to go, that we do get affordable housing in there, that the affordable housing, it does cater for all our communities. We have facilities around places of worship. We look at community wealth building within the new plan, but we also look at how we can tackle the climate crisis because that isn't going to be dealt with by skirting around the edges really. I think there's also another thing that we've pushed for quite successfully is ensuring that as far as we can, developers uh, contribute what they need to. Obviously, there's a debate around schools, but, you know, the county councils moved to that position to provide schools. But that was something we were pushing for as the city, as that, uh, expands, that we need to have the new facility, schools, community facilities, GP surgeries in the west and the rest. And we move, move forward on that. So for me, it's about principles and making sure that through the local plan with the powers that we're given and beyond, we make sure that development does work for our communities. But crucially, we're going to be lobbying, lobbying to make sure that we do get as much social and affordable housing in that process as possible, including trying to see what we can deliver as a council as well as working with partners, because that's really important after the cost of living crisis that people do actually have opportunities to live in, afford that it, uh, living, that obviously can afford to live in.
Well, Matthew, you mentioned community wealth building there. That ties into the Preston model that I referred to slightly earlier on, that for people that, that aren't aware of it. Um, I'm sure anybody who's watched this debate for the past two years is, is well aware of it. But basically it's the process of trying to retain money within the city, isn't it, using local labour and local supply chains where possible and, and creating local jobs. Uh, I think I'm right in saying that both, uh, John and Sue have used this very platform to call for evidence that it is actually working and, and doing what it says on the tin. Um, certainly in at least one of, of the last two years. And that evidence has come, hasn't it, in the past few days? Because a Liverpool University study has, has suggested that there's fewer mental health problems than would be expected in Preston, um, greater degree of life satisfaction. So to, to John and Sue, come to John first, you asked for evidence, you've got it now, haven't you? Do you accept that this is a worthwhile approach for Preston and one that it should be pursuing?
But there's no link. And you know, you, you, you just assume, I mean, every council kind of does what the Preston model does, you know, this is the thing, but we've just got a marketing slogan for it. And all the, the things, so we have, what about the cities that don't have the Preston model and have also really good outcomes on other stuff? Is that down to the fact that university has grown? Is it down to the fact we've got excellent employers, large scale employers like BAE? The problem is, we don't know. Labour loves to take credit for stuff, but they don't know. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm getting kind of tired of the Preston model stuff because they were going to talk about a bank, which won't happen. And they talk about this, that and the other. They have no actual statistical proof it's doing anything at all. Whether it is just driving these changes or is a passenger in the backseat of these changes that are already happening? Now, I am delighted that Preston's getting better. I'm delighted that, that our outcomes are improving for people in our city. But I just don't think you can take credit for it if you don't have the evidence to do so.
But can you, on that basis, can you ever get the evidence? Because you could always point to something, this is an academic study. And if, if you're saying that that isn't the evidence, you could always point to something that said, you know, well, it, it could have happened anyway.
Well, they've never brought to scrutiny. Let's, okay, well, let's, let's make a, Sue's part of scrutiny, uh, like I'm on scrutiny. Let's get him to scrutiny. Yeah, let, let's analyse it properly because so far we've had, I don't know how many years, Sue, it must be about four maybe odd years, we've been asking for information and it's never, ever arrived. So, you know, let's, let's see. On, on the last time we asked them, they said, well, we'll have to spend money to prove it, so we're not going to do it. So we're just gonna, so I can't really say anything about it because there's no proof.
Sue, are you similarly unconvinced?
Totally agree. It's a bit like Groundhog Day, this isn't it, that we, uh, we keep going back to this one. And I know originally we were promised the evidence, uh, from, from the Community Wealth Building Council. We were, we were promised it, uh, when, when he appeared before scrutiny, but it has never happened. And equally, I'd like to know how many companies in Preston have benefited from the procurement rules and how that, you know, how that has, uh, come out. And then we've got some evidence there because I do know that a lot of the jobs go to companies outside of Preston and in fact outside of Lancashire. So some of this, it seems to be very good at spin. We just need to see the evidence. I, like John, I want Preston to be a great city. I want us to benefit. Um, but I'm not sure we've got the evidence that community wealth building is working in Preston.
Matthew, I'm sure you're going to say you're actually rather more persuaded by this University of Liverpool study that's, that's come out in recent days. But can I, before you expand on that, can I just ask you one thing? Shouldn't you really have been commissioning your own research into this rather than waiting for a third party to do it? To prove that one of your flagship policies is actually worth something?
Potentially, but this is taxpayers' money. We'd rather be getting on with the job and delivering change in our communities. And this comes back to the difference. I mean, I get on with John and Sue very well personally. And I do understand that they, they want the best for Preston, but there's a fundamental difference in this election that we want to do things quite transformatively differently, to be honest. And we do think that the current economic system and who benefits from it currently and the inequality that we face, we want to tackle it locally. In terms of the study referred to, it actually appeared in The Lancet, which is probably one of the most respected medical publications within the world. So to say that they're completely deluded by uh, looking at it and accepting and publishing the findings is actually a bit naive, I would say. It was a three year study. It was commissioned by public health profession, professionals. One was a professor. And it did look at the impact of mental health, i.e. people who became less depressed, but also in terms of median wages and jobs. Compared to other areas of a similar size of the north of England, which did adopt community wealth building, we did uh, quite surpass in terms of improvements. Now, I could give you a list of policies that we've introduced in the last ten years and how it's been a political choice and made a difference. But these two are just not going to accept it because I think the challenge we get in local government often and in local politics is people are scared of new ideas. So that is something we've got to really challenge. I think we need new ideas. We need to do things differently. I think people are sick and tired of the way things are. And obviously this Labour council will do everything we can to tackle inequalities. And to tackle inequalities, we've got to do things very differently.
A, a lot of this debate over the past couple of years has been taken up by the idea of, of a Preston bank. So I'm, I'm cautious about going down that route again for the third year in a row. But as John mentioned, um, mentioned it briefly earlier, the policy is dead in the water, isn't it, Matthew? That your, your two principal partners have walked away. It, it's not going to happen, is it? You can't do it alone.
I don't think people realise that determined myself and our colleagues are to make things happen. And if we put something in a manifesto, we will ensure it will happen.
Uh, if, if, if you're determined it will happen, why not look more locally? Would it not make more sense to have a, a Lancashire bank with other, other Lancashire authorities? Would that not be more cohesive than looking at other authorities in the North West that maybe have got disparate priorities?
What we have to do is we have to do some things on a regional footprint because the reality is, is to obtain a banking licence. Banks tend to need to have a population of three million or more. So obviously we've approached, uh, can't name them yet, but some partners in Greater Manchester are showing quite strong interest and are likely to come on board. Uh, there's other partners we could announce soon and we expect it to be a regional bank across the North West. Now, I go back to wanting to do things differently. The reality is, is the large banks caused the economic crash of fifteen years ago. We then, as taxpayers, had to bail them out. And we then had austerity imposed on our communities and we saw how that affected Preston by the, the cuts to public services. So, you know, the bank is there to offer an alternative and we as quite radical, a quite radical Labour council and our politicians will encourage people to bank with it because we do feel the major banks are letting us down. A lot of the money ends up in a tax haven somewhere. They don't lend to small businesses who need to have a facility. There's elderly and disabled people who need, uh, bank branches, even people from the African Caribbean community often suffer discrimination in terms of getting bank accounts and loans from the major banks. And obviously we want to change that. So again, this is a key difference, not in terms of personality, but in terms of policy. We say the banking system as it is, isn't working. We've got the courage to work with partners and offer, you know, regionally based alternative. And that is just one aspect of the Preston model. There's, there's others around local procurement, building stuff in public ownership like the cinema, real living wage. We've got a cooperative housing project. We've got a community land trust in Plungington. We've got ten new worker cooperatives. We're even looking at how we can actually provide a broadband service because people need a broadband service often because it's too expensive or if they need to attend appointments for the GP, they need to have a, a broadband service they can rely on. So you put that together and it's very transformative.
Well, John, Sue, very briefly, the bank's still happening. Sue?
Oh, well, uh, uh, every meeting I go to, we're waiting for this news, uh, to be perfectly honest, that we've been promised it a number of times. But it's not going to happen. I, I'm absolutely convinced it won't happen.
John?
Yeah, it's a pipe dream. I think if it was going to happen, it would have. And you know what? And there's enough Labour councils in the, councils in the North West. And if Matthew and the Preston Labour team haven't yet found partners, then you've got to think whether the idea is a decent one to start off with.
If we could just come back on that, Paul, I mean, do I mean, we, we have a Conservative, uh, Secretary of State, Michael Gould, who actually has mentioned community banks. He cleared an hour about the North West Mutual, the, the eleven note white paper. In Wales, a Conservative group in the Welsh Assembly is supporting the Welsh Community Bank. And then you've got a number of Liberal Democratic councils that are quite keen on community wealth building. We have a bit of an aberration here in Preston that we have quite closed minds on trying to have a more democratic fair economy.
I'll, I'll have to let Sue and John come back in on that one. Close minds?
No, it's just, I mean, a lot of this stuff is already being done. You know, the bank is just, I don't want to get on to the bank because it's, it's a particular thing. But actually, the idea of using local, uh, services and local people is nothing unusual. The fifty odd councils run by the Lib Dems in Britain all do similar stuff. It's just that, um, Preston markets it as the Preston model when actually vast majority of people and councils already do it.
Sue, your mind closed to new ideas?
Well, my mind's close to the bank. I have to say it's, it's not going to work because it, it should have been done ages ago. I think when I look back on a previous manifesto of Labour's, I think it was mentioned in about two thousand and seventeen, um, that they were going to look at doing this. Um, but it's, it's not going to happen, unfortunately.
While, while we're on points of difference between, um, the three of you, one other point of difference that came up at, at this year's budget meeting was who should be running the Pavilion Cafe in, in Avonham Park? Now, John and Sue, you both want that to be put out to, uh, uh, either a private or a charitable enterprise rather than the council running it, as is the case at the moment. It's costing ninety thousand pounds a year, isn't it, Matthew? At, at the budget, it was suggested that these, this wasn't a loss, this was just its annual running costs. But the fact is, if it was turning a profit, it wouldn't be a ninety thousand pound cost in the budget, would it? It would be a line explaining how much profit you were making.
Well, we believe that we can improve that position and it's not just, we've got to just not think about one isolated incident. We, as a Labour council, believe that things, services often should be provided directly. So the people you vote for, which is us, have a say over how it's run. And if there's a bad service, you can come directly to us and we can actually do something about it. Additionally, the young people working in the Pavilion Cafe, they get the real living wage. And John's saying, well, every council's doing what we're doing. We were the first living wage employer in the north of England in two thousand and twelve under Labour and we promoted it across the board. And in terms of local spending, we encourage all the institutions in Preston, university. In terms of local spending, we encourage all the institutions in Preston, university, hospital, all the rest of it, to spend locally with us, and they're doing that. Through partnerships, so what John's saying is totally incorrect. So, yeah, it's a it's a principle we have around in sourcing, I understand that the circumstances were very unfortunate in which the original. Uh, business did not succeed, but we do want to make it work in the public sector, and we're convinced to actually look at something new, we're looking at potentially our kind of art exhibitions and other things in it going forward. Because the big thing about what we're going to do, if we're reelected, if I have a really creative. Feeling of expression in our city centre through a new events programme, having arts and culture concerts. You know, all kinds of things that will take place, that will make Preston a really kind of like a attractive place to go and experience things.
John, just coming back to you on the on the cafe, what's wrong with the council running it if the alternative is that you you lose it as a facility?
We're not going to lose as a facility, now the point is, I mean, Matthew just says we like to do things differently. I mean, the Cabinet Member for Resources made an absolute clangor at the budget, he said he would rather have a publicly run cafe losing money. Than any sort of charity or non-profitable running it well, I mean, what what are you, what is the added value to the people of Preston? You're losing ninety thousand pounds a year, the quality of the output's poor, and I know, because I had these conversations, there were organisations with a track record. And then economies of scale of running successful cafes who said, we'd have a go at it, and the Labour group refused to consider it. And that's where, you know, doing things around having an ideological dogma, instead of actually having a practical sense of doing what's right, because that's ninety thousand pounds. Of our residents' money that we're wasting every single year on a cafe that isn't fulfilling its purpose, we would look, it's such a good spot, it is absolute prime spot in the city. And if we can't make it run, because again, the council doesn't have, A, the economies of scales or the experience to run it. So why not let a charity that then doesn't pay the business rate, so instantly it's starting to, you don't have those losses, and then run it well? It's just, it's absolutely nonsensical for Labour, and this is where the point of difference is, if you're happy. With Labour wasting ninety thousand pounds a year on a cafe that could be run better, then vote Labour, I'm not, so vote Lib Dem.
Sue, um, are you convinced that a charitable operation could make this work? Because John mentioned that there was no evidence that the Preston model worked, but what evidence is that that in this location, a charity could could make the cafe work?
That that cafe is a jewel in the crown on that part, it could be absolutely fantastic. If it can't be making a profit when it's owned by the council. And it's costing ninety thousand a year, common sense says to give it to somebody else to run it, who will be able, with the expertise. Who will be able to make a damn good job of that that cafe, because it's fantastic, if you've ever been and ever been in that setting. You will realise how how lovely that cafe is, so. The trouble is, it's like, fortunately, Matthew, it's like, you're going to keep it no matter what, and. Martin Rollinson has already said that, keep it no matter what, and it's said with the bank, we're doing the bank no matter what, it's as simple as that, and you won't back down on it. But sometimes it's 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 not a failing to say, actually. You've listened to what people are saying, and it's time to actually do something different.
Matthew, just without going back over over the argument that we've just had, will you shift on that? Would you would you consider what Sue and John are both saying, or is it? Is it a red line for you that it stays in public hands?
I think the conversation around a cafe and how it's performing at this moment in time is a complete red herring, to be honest. Uh, the reality is with that particular instance, it did. Uh, obviously, for very unfortunate reasons in one instance, that the businesses running it failed, so obviously we are running it in house, we'll continue to run it in house, and we will make it successful. As I said, we'll look at doing things very differently, but the ideology isn't from the Labour Party, it's from these two, we've, you know, the we look at, if you look at some of the. Outsourcing arrangements for social care, for example, and the. Profit that people get at the expense of the taxpayer, which is sometimes thirty or forty percent, that costs a taxpayer money, you know. We've held the hand of large businesses who extract wealth out of our community, often. Headquartered in Great London, the South East and the rest of it for too long, and how we've done regeneration and local economics in this city. We've got a Labour councillor with a courage to say, we're going to do things differently, we're going to do it collectively. We're going to do it to benefit all of us, benefit local people, get a living wage in there, make sure that the landed assets, which is. You know, across Preston, as much of it ends up in the people's hands as possible, and that is where the approach is very different, so I do think, I think this idea of a cafe is a distraction. Yes, we're going to try and make it return to a profit, but yeah, it's back in. Back in house now, we will make it work, but the danger is, is if we do. Go through a process, and we can't guarantee to give it to a charity often, or a social enterprise. And it fails again, we're going to have a facility that's going to be empty for a number of months, like we have with the Guild Hall, we're not going to allow that to happen.
Well, Matthew, you you almost um said the phrase in your manifesto that it was going to to question about the Preston is is doing it for itself or doing it for our for ourselves. Isn't the fact, though, that Preston's actually only able to do it for itself with an awful lot of government help, the towns fund money? That you got, you know, twenty one million there, the levelling up fund money as well, that will um fund the the replacement of of the old tram bridge and and various other projects, regeneration in the parks and cycling schemes. And the like, Labour's often at as a city council level, often quite sniffy about these one-off government pots. Of funding on you, because you say it doesn't make up for for the loss of of day to day revenue over the past ten years. But you you're not afraid to use them, are you? And if you weren't in a position to use them, your plans for the city wouldn't look like they do now.
Well, yes, I mean, we are getting some level of mainly capital funding, which is welcome, and obviously we'll bid for any fund funding that we have, but we just cannot get away from the fact. That John and Sue are part of parties. Uh, that from twenty ten onwards, for the first five years with the Lib Dem, imposed the most brutal levels of austerity on Preston, which is primarily a working class community. And the people who uh disbenefited from them and suffered were often people who were. Women, the disabled and minority communities, these are the values that they have. Uh, so this is why I say we're really keen to do everything differently, now obviously. Much of what we've done was done before, we did get the levelling up fund and the Sherpa prosperity money and the towns fund, you know, we planned having the cinema, the Harris. Before that, and as I said before, we collaborated with what we have already, the universities, hospitals, local businesses, to make sure that we did. Develop a local economy that's going to work for everyone, so yes, we're we're pleased that we have been successful, but we've got to put that in the context of brutal austerity, the council staff we would have had. Uh, in two thousand and ten, before austerity started, it was twelve hundred, now about seven hundred. That's real life changing cuts that we've had in the last.
Just have to bring Sue and John in on that, because we're running a bit short of time, it is an inescapable and uncomfortable fact for you, isn't it, your your collective national party's legacy left by austerity? Sue, go to you first, I'm all.
Um, obviously, we've been through some difficult times, and I understand, uh, you know, with all the cuts and everything else, but it wasn't just at Preston, this Preston is doing it for ourselves. I would say with a little help from their friends, or in some cases, not their friends, the amount of money that has been given to you by the government. Uh, it's no good saying that that's a little amount, and okay, it might not, if you add all the years up since two thousand and ten, which is well before. I came on the council, maybe it's not the same amount of money, but you you're reaping the benefits now. I'm getting a lot of money coming through from central government to help Preston. And and the the level that's sent, well, the the complaints that's given against. Alls as Conservatives, like, oh, no, they don't get anything, you're obviously friends of Conservatives, you're not friends of Conservatives, obviously, but. The government still recognises how important Preston is. In the north, and that's why you're successful in getting those bids, and we all hope we make success of it. But, sorry.
So sorry, Sue, John, just coming to you, the the seeds of of Preston's financial difficulties. Sown by Lib Dems in the early twenty teens, is that a fair assessment?
Uh, not really, because actually, if you look back at the final Gordon Brown and Alyssa Darling budget, they were predicting to cut one billion more than what actually the coalition did. The country had suffered a heart attack because the Labour Party had outthatched Thatcher in terms of banking deregulation, so then, and all councils have had to go through it. Now, that's not an excuse for the coalition, like all governments, like Sue talked before, she has lots of problems with her Conservative government, I remember Matthew complaining an awful lot about the Blair Brown government when he was on council as well. It is the nature of it, but we can't win any battles in the past, so what can you get going forward? We need a proper structured funding for our councils, these pots of money that have happened, absolutely fantastic, this is great, no one will quibble about them. Cross party for support for getting that money, but it does take an awful lot of office of time to keep on. Bidding and servicing these actual funding pots, and I don't forget, we're very lucky that we've got some, a lot of councils have spent a lot of time and effort bidding for money that they didn't get. And so actually, we need a proper structural increase in what councils do, because council facilities are getting more and more thing, and. I mean, we're all on the county, I mean, this is supposed to be a press one, but the how we deal with social care going forward without structural kind of change in how councils afford, this is a really. Massive ongoing problem, and we need, and usually, we've been getting statements that we get like funding for the next year, and that's as much notice as we get, we can't do any sort of long term planning. Now, the latest one, we've had it for two years, which was seen as a blessing, we need proper, long term strategic thinking about what local government wants to do and how we fund it.
Just very briefly, I just want to touch on on the uh challenge of day to day spending over the next few years. Um, you know, the six hundred thousand pounds of savings required in each of the next three years, according to to the budget papers. And reserves at the council due to go down from eight point six million to one point three million. Matthew, aren't you running this authority quite close to the edge, and instead of lording no cuts budgets as you have previously? Shouldn't you really by now have been taking tougher decisions than you have?
No, we haven't, obviously, Marty was referred to before, I mean, he's been in charge.
Paulson, your deputy.
My apologies, yeah, I mean, he's been in charge of the finances for twelve years, the reality is, is I think in that period, there's been one redundancy, and that was done through. Without going into the terms of it with agreement with individual and uh. Uh, through consensus, and obviously.
But that's my point, aren't you running out of road now?
No, no, we've been, to be honest, we've been in this situation now for twelve years, and obviously, we we have a principle that we're not going to impose cuts on our communities as much as possible, so obviously, we're looking at things like. Are there assets we don't need which we can sell potentially, which can get revenue for other services and other things we're doing, so we are doing it in a very. Uh, pragmatic way, but obviously, the the policies will continue, and we do think we can manage it in the next few years, so from our perspective, we've got it all in hand, that might sound a bit complacent, but we have this every single year. You know, uh, having to deal with cuts, and they're now not as severe as they was, they were ten years ago, but they're pretty bad in terms of the totality of what we faced.
John and Sue, just to each of you briefly, any obvious areas that you think the council should be looking to make those necessary savings? John?
Um, no, it's difficult, and I I've always said actually that, um. It's a bit like a poker game, you know, so the 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 hand that the Labour have been given in Preston City Council is a difficult one, but it doesn't mean they have to play it badly. And the point, and what you were saying, you have to find six hundred thousand pounds a year, don't forget, at the end of that budget cycle, they have to find then three, because they're losing around two point, two point one million a year. Roughly, so you'd have to find six hundred thousand plus two point something million, uh, go at the end of that point, so again, it's not sustainable, local government's not sustainable, we've seen. Local governments go, councils go to the wall of various political colours, there has to be a fundamental change, otherwise, we're just salami slicing. And and a kind of like managed decline, when actually councils, we know, are the most efficient form of government, they have outstanding workers. Who do outstanding jobs throughout the year under very, look at what happened in Covid, look how our council staff stood. Great stood up to be counted and helped all that issue, but it goes back to the only point, you've got to have a structural reform of how we fund local councils.
Sue, finally to you on that one, could the council be run any leaner and more efficiently than it is being at the moment?
I totally agree, we need a long term financial settlement from from government for councils, but equally, I would just like to say, um. There's only been one redundancy at Preston, because there's so many vacancies, we don't need to make redundancies, because there's so many vacancies within the staff. Because staff are are moving on and not staying, so that needs to be addressed, uh, because our staff are a very precious asset. Uh, and I totally agree with what Matthew says, they need to look at what they can sell off, other than other things that they currently own as a a. Council to see if we can raise some some money there, because we are going to be in a very difficult situation going forward.
Well, when nearly at an end now, I just wanted to put one very quick fire, basically, one word answer to each of your question, don't worry, it's nothing too difficult, I can see you all. Shuffling slightly uncomfortably there, uh, we mentioned the old tram bridge before, and the fact that it is going to be replaced as part of of Preston's levelling up bid. Uh, so one of the questions that's going to crop up pretty soon is what the design of the new bridge should look like, so. To each of you, would you like to see replica, traditional or radical? John?
Um, I I don't know, uh. Is that an honest politician answer? I have no idea, I look forward to seeing the designs and then uh making a judgment, because the people will be architects and I'm not, so I will look at their designs.
Matthew, are you are you any more willing to to nail your colours to a bridge design mast?
Early days, I'm generally radical, but in this instance, I'm going to say traditional.
Traditional, and Sue, how about you?
That was funny, because I was going to say the same thing. Uh, I'm actually, yeah, I actually think, because it's it's going to be a new tram bridge, something completely different, something really. Stand out rather than back to the old traditional one, uh, but anyway, we'll see, it's up to everybody else to decide, not us.
Well, thanks very much to each of you uh for sparing us the time today, as always, Matthew Brown, Sue Witten and John Potter. Polling day is the fourth of May, you can of course return postal votes anytime up until that point as well, hopefully the last hour has left you a little better informed. And however you're voting, and whether or not that's changed in the course of the last sixty minutes, thanks very much indeed for watching, bye bye.